Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of December 10th, 2013. I'd like to thank the Garden Club for the flowers they always provide. And roll call, please.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor DeDina.
Here.
Councilmember Eric.
Here.
Eric R. Wayne.
Here. Mark, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one announcement this evening. There will not be a city council meeting on December 24th. The 4th Tuesday in December, the next regular city council meeting after tonight will be held on January 14th, 2014. Presentations? There aren't any presentations this evening. Review of the agenda? Any issues with the agenda? Okay. Approval of the minutes of our last council meeting? No minutes? Consent calendar? All items are considered routine or implemented early council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by council member, citizen, or staff. Anything on the consent calendar?
If there's no items we pulled, move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number eight, public hearings. There are no public hearings this evening. Public comment, an item's not in the agenda. It's a council's policy to refer matters raised in this form to staff for investigation and/or action were appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council in a public comment? Just to state your name and your street for us. Thank you.
Gerald Gurnsey, Concord Way. My attorney sent you a letter a couple of months ago requesting that you sell one of the properties to us, and it was totally denied. And now I'm here for the city council requesting permission to buy it, or at least a chance to bid on it. And there are like five or six of us that want lots.
Thank you. Conduct of business, item 10. The first item is, A, receive an oral report on design of the arch feature and east side design at the Caltrain grade separation and provide city council comments.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have tonight Rafael Boland of the JPP, and I think our conversation will be facilitated if we allow Mr. Boland to make a short presentation, cover a couple of topics in follow-up to previous conversations that have been had here at previous city council meetings, and then allow you to engage a discussion both about the arch design and the design of the landscape features along First Avenue.
Thank you. So I'll just very briefly give us a status update on some of the east side landscaping issues that have been ongoing, and then discuss the arch, where we are and next steps. So the two items on the east side that I'd like to discuss are the sidewalk along First Avenue and then the terrace planting. Both items we discussed a couple of council meetings ago. So very briefly, the sidewalk alignment, as we discussed, varies depending whether you're to the north or to the south of Pine along First, and all show figures to that effect. However, subsequent to my last presentation to this body, I had a follow-on meeting with Councilwoman O'Connell, and concerns were raised, and the question was asked, why don't we just have the sidewalk consistently run along the outside? So that's what I'm here to ask. So here's where we are today. Depending which side of Pine Avenue you are, it's either a sidewalk followed by a planting strip followed by a wall, or there's a planting strip followed by a sidewalk followed by a wall. And the recommendation was to make the whole length half a sidewalk and then a larger planting strip, including the tree well. So here's where we are today, trees against the side for part of it, and here's the proposal is to move the sidewalk to the outside for its entirety. Second item I wanted to mention on the east side landscape, this is a follow-up item, but just a correct slide that I've shown a couple of times here, which is the terracing, and this is the original version I presented, sort of gave the impression that it was relatively flat, whereas in reality it will be up to eight feet from the grade sap and then a max slope of two to one. So that's one of the slides I showed previously. I showed it a little steeper, but just to be clear, this is what we're actually proceeding with at this time. And then finally, I'd like to talk about my favorite arch. So really briefly, so very briefly, where we are, the mock-up has been completed. It's been viewed by the council as well as by city staff. And there were some concerns that came out of this process and also some of the quotes and bids that we've been receiving. So two things that I want to highlight. One is about a year ago, I performed an estimate, I gave a total cost of where the arch was going to be at about $1.2 million. Since then, receiving some more information from the contractor, it looks like that number is closer to $1.4 million. Two things. One, we've identified some items that we could pare back, some of the scope items to get it back to 1.2, so that's something I'd like to talk about. And then the second thing is that, and this leads to my second concern that was raised, is the whole concept of the lighting and how it fits with the ambient light as it's out there. And so I'm going to present another alternative as well, which would also get back into that 1.2 range. So very briefly, this is the arch at night with all the background lighting, which was not really presented before, so I just want to kind of show how it would fit in with the lighting at the platform, the lighting at the street level, and then also the lighting under San Bruno. So the other concept that we've been exploring is, in lieu of lighting the arch internally, is to just make the arch a solid arch. So it would be very similar in size and dimension, however, rather than internally lit, it would actually be a solid arch, and then it could be lit from the underside, either floodlit or some, either from platform height or from the bottom to give it a little more of an accent. And here's the same shot as taken during the day. And then finally, sort of next steps, where are we with the arch and moving forward? So where we are is, we're at a decision point in terms of needing to know how we're going to proceed next. So the central question, I guess the first and foremost question is, what is the city interested in constructing? Is it an internally lit arch, or is it a, what I'm calling a solid arch where it's lit from the bottom? Now, why this is a central question is because the long lead item, the thing that would basically be driving our schedule, is the procurement of the plexiglass material itself. It's a long lead item, and basically by the 20th of this month, that will become the critical path for the whole job. And obviously, we can't have that happen, so that's the concern. So if we were to go with a solid arch, we have a little bit, but not a lot, more time because now you're ordering sheet metal, but it buys you to the end of January and that's it. I understand those are short timelines. I appreciate that. And so my third bullet point is very simply, if the council needs more time to make this decision and more information to do so, what that would mean practically is, if these two timelines can't be met, would be that the construction of the arch itself would have to continue as separate from the main grade sap. That being said, we have built a fair portion of the arch itself. So the footings are in the ground, we've already ordered steel, we bent that steel, so there'd be a certain amount of cost in transitioning that over, and then there'd be certainly scheduled and likely cost impacts as well for going out for a separate contract. Remember, we were trying to take advantage of economies of scale for using the San Bruno grade separation contractor. Those would be lost if we were to go to a standalone contract. That's my presentation. Are there any questions?
You were, you were, through the chair. You were going to explain that you had some other options to reduce?
Oh, yes. And I'm sorry, I didn't blow it up enough maybe where it can make some sense, but actually broke down, and I can furnish you this information in greater detail, but essentially, there's a menu of options where we can reduce some of the scope, and various combinations of that adds up to the $200,000 savings. So things that I'm proposing, and these are just my ideas, I mean, we're willing to look at other ways to pare back the scope, is in the current $1.4 million, we're showing the elevator glass, colored glass. My recommendation is to not do that. The other elevator's already in, it's already clear, it's just an option. Another thought would be, currently, this design, although it's not shown in this figure, assumes a three-dimensional, a rather elaborate medallion would be part of the design. And so an option would be to just include the metallic lettering along the side. That's already part of the contract, so there's zero cost to that. Another option would be to light the side you see here before you, but not the side on the opposite side of the paper, meaning the side at the platform. There's savings there, obviously, in the lighting, but there's also savings in the total dimensions of the arch, right? Because you no longer need this. My apologies. You no longer need the, better? Okay. Usually not accused of not speaking loudly enough, so. So the backside could get a little bit smaller. So there's a little bit of material saving, but it's mostly the lighting, obviously, you can save. So those are the main things we would show to compress that estimate. The other thing we're doing already is, we've just reduced some of our soft costs, just to kind of force it into that 1.2 threshold. So we're doing that anyway regardless of the direction we receive. So those are the ideas, and I can lay those out in greater detail, but various combinations of those add up to the $200,000.
Rafael, I'd like to, you don't have to know it tonight because you probably don't have it all in front of you, but I'd like to know what you spent so far and what you spent it on.
Okay. So what we've spent so far, I don't have the complete list in front of me, but we are at approximately $550,000, $580,000, somewhere in that range, spent to date. So let me just broadly speaking discuss where that went in. So roughly, and I sent these figures to staff, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but roughly speaking, approximately $180,000 of that was the footings and the foundation for the arch. So essentially, whatever you build there, that's a cost that would be recoverable. The remainder of the construction portion was approximately $40,000 for the steel itself, so not the cladding, not the stuff you saw on the mock-up, but the actual skeleton steel, and then another approximately $40,000 to bend it, cut it, and shape it. So we actually have the steel, it's in Oregon right now, bent and ready to go. So again, if that's a cost, if you were still going to build something down the road, you'd have some shipping cost, but that would still be not a lost endeavor. And then finally, we've paid most, but not all, of the design costs associated with this. The remainder, there's a small amount there for actually building the mock-up and doing viewings and things like that, that's about $25,000, something in that range. And then there's an equally small amount, approximately $40,000, which is the soft costs for administration, oversight, that kind of stuff.
Okay. I'll just speak for myself. I saw the so-called mock-up, I wasn't pleased with it at all because, to me, and I'm in this type of industry, a mock-up is what you're really going to see.
Right.
And it was pretty well slapped together. It only had one face on it, the metal wasn't even on it properly, it was bolted with C-clamps, it didn't give me a real indication of what was going on. And I didn't like it at all, and I personally think that we have to revisit it, whether it even be an arch. That's my feeling now. So the city, I don't believe, is going to give you an okay by December 20th. We're going to need some more time, and I've explained this to Mark Simon today and told him that too. So I'd like to hear what the rest of the council has to say.
Mr. Mayor, did you just say $25,000 to do those mock-ups?
So the mock-up itself was probably no more than, I don't know, $1,200 or something like that. It was a very modern piece. There was just procuring material and labor. I'm not exactly sure what that would be, but it would be significantly more than the $1,200. It would be in the.
I trust you, my comments that I emailed, were those passed on to you? Did you see my comments on when I saw the mock-up?
I did not.
Yes, they were, and that was the reason that the, I don't know that the email was passed along, but that's the reason that the design was, or the renderings were produced for the solid steel arch, that it came directly from the comments you made.
Okay. I mean, I agree with the mayor saying that, you know, it was, I expected more, I expected to see something, but it was enough for me. I was there with the vice mayor, and you were there, and it was very clear that, well, not very clear, but it occurred to me that this was not going to really appear much, if anything, like the original designers had presented it to us. We had a lot of other examples of other structures and things that had this type of illuminated, you know, metal sheeting, and what really surprised me was how it was not as bright as you would think it would be considering it was in practically a pitch-black area. So that coupled with the ambient light and the lighting of the platform and above and below, meant that that was just going to dissipate even more.
Right.
And then when we saw the additional part, which would be the base and the framing, that's where I was, and I'm almost nearly convinced right now, that this type of arch, which is internally illuminated with the gun, what do you call this metal?
Perforated metal.
Perforated metal, is, to me, unacceptable because you are going to see the ribs of the frame through it. You're resembling it somewhat in there, but it's going to be a lot more detailed than that because it's going to be framing practically at every foot or so, it seems. So you're going to get this checkerboard of black behind this green illumination, so that, to me, was totally unsatisfactory. That's why, I mean, if anything, if we do do an arch, I'm going to start, I'm fairly closely leaning, if we do an arch, close to leaning towards a solid, you know, solid structure. The illumination, internal illumination, hasn't impressed me at all.
Okay.
Anyone else? Michael?
Thank you. I've never really been a fan of the blowing arch anyway, so I like the idea of maybe going to something solid. I think I could be sold on that.
Okay.
Can we see, in fact, can we, I'm sorry. Can we see the solid one again, please?
So there it is in the daytime. And then what you're not seeing in this view is if we put any kind of illumination, it would sort of come up from the bottom just to make it pop a little more. So that's, again, that's without illumination, that's with illumination.
Okay. Could you do the daytime?
Yeah, sorry.
Thanks.
So the concept in this figure is that the perforated metal would just go out the window, there would be no more plexiglass. Instead, the whole cladding would be like a sheet metal that would be welded, so you wouldn't see seams, and it would just be painted a dark green or whatever other color was requested.
Okay. It sounds like we're going to need a little more time for this council to look into a little bit more.
Understood.
And I think we have a member of the public that wanted to speak on something regarding the grade separation, is that correct?
Correct. The name is Wes Cole from Sylvan Avenue, and I'm representing the American Legion Hall, that's 757 Sammataill Avenue. And I see that you've put forms for, you're robbing us of two parking spots. Okay? And one, you know, us veterans, it's a lot of handicap veterans, Chris Palace was originally a member of the council here. He's handicapped. He needs to get out of the ready-wheel bus, and the ready wheels has no place to park. We have no parking in the front, and you guys took it all away. That's what my complaint is.
Rafael, could we have you just look at that? I know you look at some other parking issues that we had along first. Could you address this, not necessarily right now, but could you look at them when you get back?
Sure.
All right, I would appreciate that.
And then, I'm sorry, Mr. Cole, and also Rafael, if you can look, when turning into the Legion Hall at one angle, now that it's been changed a little bit, so you can't turn in, you can go in from the right, but I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the left now is more, it's almost impossible, I guess.
Right. Going northbound, you can't turn into the post anymore. You got to sort of make a U-turn to get into the post, where before you could.
I'm sorry, so you're northbound on the scene in the morning, you want to make that turn up because the sidewalk's been moved out?
Well, I won't say the sidewalk, the divider in the center, where you guys put in the center, right there. The median.
Correct.
And in front of the hall, where you put the curb there, to extend it out, you got that little median there, and it's not very wide when you extended a sidewalk out to that median. And for any car to come through, I don't know how, or big trucks and stuff, it's pretty tough for them, you know? I sit there and see that stuff all day long, I just shake my head. I says, where these guys come from? You know, but it needs to be addressed, you know, especially the handicap.
Okay. He'll get back to us with that.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Now that he's aware of the situation. Thank you.
All right.
Anything else for JPP? Robert?
I was waiting. Robert Rico, Seventh Avenue, relative to maybe saving a couple of dollars. The elevator glass on the west side is clear. Why do we need to spend extra money and put colored glass? I would say make them the same, and that may save us a couple of dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? Okay. We're going to move right on to 10B, which is adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate a development agreement with Castle Companies to construct new homes in the 10 lots owned by the city of San Bruno and PG&E in the Crestmore neighborhood.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Harry Burrows, and I'm the city's project manager for the Crestmore Reconstruction Project. The item before you tonight is the recommendation of a home builder for the 10 vacant lots in the Crestmore neighborhood. The map that's before you shows the current ownership of the vacant lots within the neighborhood. The lots that PG&E owns are shown in green, outlined in green. The lots that the city own are shown in red. City currently owns five lots, two of which, the ones that are shaded there with the solid shading, are envisioned for future public purposes, one for a potential expansion of the park and the other for public open space. So the three city lots and the seven PG&E-owned lots total the 10 lots that are the subject of this item tonight. On April 9th of 2013, the city council directed the staff to coordinate with PG&E and package their seven lots with the three city-owned lots and solicit proposals from qualified home builder developers to construct homes on those lots. The issues that were discussed by the city council at that time included the desire to avoid a fragmented build-out of the remaining lots, to seek a single qualified home builder developer who possessed the financial and operational capacity to guarantee the time of completion and occupancy of the homes, and to avoid some of the potential challenges of selling to individual lots, some of which would include how to select a purchaser if there's multiple parties that want to purchase a single lot. Other issues discussed were potential financial complications when an individual owner doesn't have the financial capability to get a construction loan as well as a purchase of the lot. So those were some of the items that were discussed. Subsequent to that direction, the city entered into an agreement with PG&E, had appraisals performed, and issued a request for proposals in August of 2013. The RFP was sent out to over 50 home builders, contractors, and other interested parties. The RFP specified certain criteria and spelled out the requirements that the successful builder would be subject to. These criteria included developer qualifications and experience in constructing multiple units at once, the financial capacity to purchase all of the lots and finance the simultaneous construction of 10 homes. We looked at operational capability and the structure of the company, as well as their proposed architecture and design. The purchase price was not the sole and primary criteria for selection, but obviously it was an important factor. The design requirements were also specified in the RFP. Of specific note was that the prospective builders were made aware that all of the homes will need to meet the current design guidelines and standards, and that no variances for larger homes or lesser setbacks will be allowed, as was allowed for some of the residents who rebuilt their homes in the neighborhood. So the city received six proposals. Four of the proposals were from what we call merchant home builders, traditional home builders, and two proposals were from investor builder groups. Staff ranked the proposals based upon the criteria that I just described, with particular emphasis on the operational and financial capabilities to deliver the 10 constructed homes within the next 12 to 14 months, hopefully concurrent with the completion of the rebuild of the infrastructure in the neighborhood. Two of the proposals were ranked essentially equally. Those were the Castle Companies and DeNova Homes listed there. All of the proposals were deemed responsive with the exception of D.R. Horton. D.R. Horton, you can see, submitted the highest purchase price. However, they did not submit a proposal, only a letter of interest, so their proposal was, or their response was disqualified. Otherwise, all of the teams submitted very solid proposals. However, the lesser-ranked teams, that ranking reflects both the lack of extensive experience of their team, their lesser financial capability, and/or lower purchase price. So staff then asked both DeNova and Castle to submit additional information regarding the proposed homes they would construct, including examples of their fit and finish, make sure the interiors were comparing apples to apples, and other assumptions that they put into their proposals. Both companies, after this analysis, were deemed, again, equally capable. Staff gave the nod to Castle based upon this final review and the higher purchase price. Their purchase price is $85,000 per lot, average higher. So staff recommends a selection of Castle Companies as the builder of these 10 vacant lots. Very quickly, these aren't meant to illustrate the exact homes that Castle would propose here, but this is some renderings of some homes that they've built in similar locations just to give us an idea of the quality of their product. And this slide shows some of the interior finishes that they would propose to be consistent with the homes in this neighborhood. So if the council concurs, the next step would be the negotiation of a development agreement, and then the design and approval process, and ultimately, construction. It's anticipated that if the selection occurs tonight, that the design process can occur during the spring. We can start construction in the summer, and home sales and occupancy can occur late this year and into the first quarter of 2015. Mr. Steve Garrett, the president of Castle Companies, is here in the audience tonight. Should the council have any questions? And staff is also available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions of staff or Mr. Garrett with Castle?
Through the chair.
Ken.
Can you explain, so if we accept Castle Companies with the purchase price of $4.15 million, so that's the compensation to the city or to the, you know, to the trust or to the foundation? And that's it? And then whatever they build and they sell, that goes to them?
Yeah, I guess one clarification. Three of the lots are owned by the city, so 415,000 times three would go to the city. The remaining proceeds would go to PG&E as the owner of the seven lots.
Okay. And my other question is that, when you say that there'll come, and the review process through San Bruno Planet Commission and city staff, you say there won't be any variances. It's my understanding that there were, a majority of the new homes sought increased FARs. I mean, are you saying that they will not be able to, or will they have to conform to the threshold figures? Or will they be able Or will they be able to make the same case that anyone in this community can do, based on our ordinance and the design guidelines?
No, we made it very clear in the RFP, and I think Castle understands that it will need to conform to the current residential design guidelines and standards, which would not allow those variances.
Okay, so semantics aside, I mean, variance is one thing, and maybe the community development director can... We have an FAR threshold of fifty-five percent, and projects were approved at sixty-two percent. Okay, are we saying that they will have to conform to the fifty-five percent on every single lot?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Any questions of staff?
Real quick, if it goes forward, I would just hope and encourage that as far as the development and even the selling of the homes, be thought of as far as prevailing wage, union, and as far as local. And I'd like to see that be in strong consideration as this project goes forward, if awarded.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Mark?
I did, I was informed there may be some additional residents in the audience who may wish to speak before you make a decision.
Okay, anyone like to say anything? Just tell us your name and your street, please.
Barbara Passion on Clermont Drive.
And pull that right down in front of you, there you go.
That better?
Yes.
Barbara Passion, Clermont Drive, resident there for forty-one years, and we are interested in a lot for our children who have grown up there. We'd like to, you know, there's many of us interested, and we'd like to see what come up up heart.
My name's Maria Tavara, and I'm at sixteen thirty-one Clermont Drive, and Barbara, I too, my husband and I, would be interested for our children to buy a lot. Thank you.
I've already said what I add to Gerald Gurnsey Concord, but I'm interested in how much PG&E will get paid for these seven lots?
The answer is four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars per lot.
Per lot? So why is PG&E making such a big profit off of us?
It's our understanding that, I'm sorry, through the city council, it's our understanding that PG&E does not intend to receive any net proceeds over the cost that they incurred in purchasing the lots, and that any, at least net revenues would be donated, it's what we've been told, to charity or some other purpose that is not a profit to PG&E.
Okay, as I said earlier, I'd like to buy one of the lots, I've been trying to buy one for over a year now, I could have had a house built there already.
I'm Chris Charambaro, I live at nine seven one Glenview Drive. I have empty lots on both sides of my house, and I also have expressed interest in buying a lot. We'd like to buy a house or build a house for our daughters, so that they could live in our neighborhood, live next door to us. They may not like that now, but they will later, so...
And so will you.
Yes, especially for me. So we wanted to express our interest in buying a lot as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Castle?
Good evening, Mayor Wen, members of the council, I'm Steve Garrett, I'm a partner with the Castle Companies. I'll try to keep my comments brief. I just want to thank the staff for their analysis and the presentation. We were pleased to participate in the process, we thought it was well-conducted and that the playing field was level. And we rarely see the opportunity to build new homes in a community along the peninsula, and we're very much looking forward to this opportunity. A large portion, we've been in business for forty years, it's a family-owned business, and we are, I'd say, more than half of our business now is smaller infill home building, where we're working with neighbors and working with the community, and this fits very well in the types of opportunities and things that we are pursuing nowadays after the real estate crash, and we're very much looking forward to this. In addition, with some questions with regard to prevailing wage, I believe we may be the only medium-sized home builder in the Bay Area that is still a signatory to the union carpenters' contract. I don't know if that's completely true, but I think it is. And we employ union carpenters, they're our employees, and they have been, the folks who are our superintendents have been with us for about twenty years typically. So we're a long-term, relationship-oriented kind of a business. And then we also typically try to employ union subcontractors that are local and close to where the home building occurs, for the natural reason that if there are service requirements, or if something goes wrong in a house, occasionally it does, it's easier to call a subcontractor that's a few miles away than one that's a long distance away. We do not employ soup-to-nuts union contractors, in some cases, some of those trades simply are not for home building, there's not unions that are really active for things like building fences and things of that nature, so we don't always employ them. And then, another thing with respect to working with local people, we did do our market analysis locally, and we used a local agent, and we would definitely be talking with her about considering to work with us, you know, if we're selected and if we move forward with this opportunity. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Just two things, it is your intent, and obviously Harry mentioned it, that you're going to build all of these at the same time?
Yes, it is. It was made very clear to us by Mr. Burrows and the city manager that it was very high on the priority list for the city of San Bruno to select a builder whose intentions were to start and build all ten of the homes at the same time. And we're accustomed to doing that, we're doing it right now in Nevada with a twenty-five unit development, we're, first phase is approximately twelve homes, and we're building all twelve at once. And so, we're accustomed to doing that, and it's probably, it's something that we are willing to do and look forward to doing.
Okay, and you said you had an agent on board for all ten homes?
We do not, we will be interviewing.
Oh, okay.
But we did get some advice from a local agent.
Okay, all right, and just so everybody knows, it was our intent to get these all done at the same time, simply because of the impact on the neighborhood. What we didn't want to do is try to sell two or three, four, have somebody say, "Maybe I can't get the financing, we're going to wait another year," and have this neighborhood continually impacted. You're really impacted now with what's happening up there, as far as the storm drains and the laterals coming up, and the traffic and the streets, and we wanted to minimize that as much as possible. But there's nothing to preclude any of you from, you know, going forward and talking to that particular agent whenever that agent is hired, you know, to get in line, if you would. So it was our intent to do this for the benefit of the entire neighborhood, so that you would be less impacted going forward, because we know what you've been through, and we have another year to go.
And we provided Mr. Burrows and his team financial information and references from money center banks that you've all heard of, without naming names, and those references are there, and they are financed us in this type of project, in this size project, in the past, and they're more than capable and willing to do it here.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask one last question, sir? With the economy of scale here, ten homes all at once, plus you just bought the dirt for four hundred, over four hundred thousand dollars, and I know, I don't think you can sell these homes for, you know, one point five, two million dollars apiece.
I agree.
Although you'd like to.
But I agree.
Can you give some sort of percentage as to, I mean, the economy of scale, you know, how much you'd be, you know, how much you could save, as opposed to, you know, a family that's building a custom home, you know? What...
Well, I, yeah, um, I, gosh, that is, I'm going to be shooting from the hip, so you'll have to bear with me, but two things to consider. First of all, the economies of scale certainly give you, us, the ability to do the hard-cost portion of it for less than, say, a homeowner could do it, and the experience level that we bring to the table, just knowing where to buy things and what people want and that sort of thing, as opposed to a consumer that is faced with some daunting tasks and decisions as to everything from colors to cabinets and all finishes and all sorts of things. So we have that advantage, but the disadvantage sometimes with the ten homes would be for us to finish ten homes simultaneously and then sell and close them simultaneously, that's a disadvantage, because you realistically aren't going to close ten homes all in the same thirty-day span, so we're going to have some carrying costs there that are disadvantaged. I don't think that's great, especially in the interest rate environment we're in today. To get more specifically to answering your question, Councilman Abara, what I am accustomed to seeing is if a homeowner comes to build, say, a nicely finished home of this size, they could expect to pay maybe three hundred to four hundred dollars a foot to build that house. In today's environment, with a builder with our economies of scale and our relationships and the different things that we could, you know, for example, you know, architectural costs are lower, structural engineering is lower, because we're building a very similar home in the same neighborhood with the same soils conditions, so we have all those advantages in lowering our costs. I would think that we could probably do it for half of that, or maybe a little more than half.
Okay.
Hope that answers your question.
Thank you very much.
Anything else? Action by the council?
To the chair.
Ken.
If there's nothing else, I'll introduce the resolution for adoption.
Councilmember Iber.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Wayne.
Aye. Item eleven, reports of commissions, boards, and committees, there are no reports this evening, twelve comments from council members, I would just like to wish everyone a very happy holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, be safe, and be warm. Anyone else?
I do.
Irene?
Thank you. The beautification task force is going to do their annual holiday lights on Channel One during the Christmas and New Year's timeframe, so you can turn on Channel One and see if your house, if you've lit your house up for the holidays, if you've put, if it's on there or not. If you want to make sure that your house is on there, you can take the photo yourself and email it to me, my email address is on the city website. So if you want to make sure, because sometimes we miss, we miss houses, if you want to make sure your house is displayed on Channel One during those time period, email me a photo. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd like to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and shop local.
Okay, with that, we had closed session before this council meeting, and meeting adjourned until next year, January fourteenth.